We will call our meeting to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Flornoy?
Here.
Hallie?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Revolinsky?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Our mayor is away tonight. I'm having honors. And we'll start with our consent agenda, which includes approval of minutes from our February 22nd council meeting, approval of the February 26th payroll, March 11th payroll, health insurance renewal, February finance report, resolution of employment of fire department in the fire department, in the police department, and promotion in the police department, approval of liquor license for Pizza Hut, Fairfield Golf and Country Club, Fairfield Arts and Convention Center Catering Department, Walmart and Quality Quick Stop, also approval of claims in the amount of $592,249.44. We have a motion?
Move the to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have public appearances from Constable Darren Hamilton regarding Kiwanis Kids' Day.
Yes. Coming up, September 17th of this year, Saturday, the Kiwanis Club would like permission to put on its annual Kids' Day celebration. We had a pretty successful Kids' Day last year. It was our 50th year of being a club here in Fairfield, so we're looking forward to another year coming up. The theme for the parade is "When I Grow Up." So you might want to keep that in mind when you talk to people about what type of floats you want to build. Everything's pretty much going to be the same as it's been for the last 17 years that I've been doing this. So we'll have the parade organized up at the high school at 9:00 in the morning, and the parade will start at 10:00. Street closures, I've worked out in the past with the chief of police, I'll continue to do the same thing that I've done with him and the rest of the police department when it comes to manning the day. They've always done a tremendous job, they've always helped out a lot. The sheriff's department has always helped us with cones to be able to block traffic off when we need it and then open it up very quickly after we've gone through an area. So I'll have more information for those departments as it comes closer to time. We felt that we wanted to get our shoe in the door for the use of the square once again this year.
Is that September 17?
September 17.
Okay.
Third Saturday.
Thank you.
Is there something we need to vote on or something, Darren? Or you're just informing us?
You need to grant use of the square like you always do. So you'll need a motion to grant the Kiwanis Club the use of the square on the 17th of September, Saturday.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Hallie, second by Flornoy. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Next, we have Joan Harden. Joan, would you like to come up to the podium? Joan appeared before the Public Safety Committee at our last, at our meeting before, the last two meetings of the Public Safety Committee regarding issue on Second Street and Harrison. And you had some new, you want to talk about the evolution of this and why Joan is here tonight instead of meeting with our committee?
That's fine. Joan brought two concerns before the committee. One was Second and, help me, Madison?
Madison.
And at that corner, it was regards to parking with cars that are parked too close to the intersection, causing a backup on traffic and getting safely turned onto and sometimes off of that street. And then a second concern further south, so down at South Second and Harrison, where there's a house on the northeast corner of that intersection that has a fence that obstructs the view of traffic going east and as you're looking east on Harrison. The committee addressed both concerns. There is currently a sign now placed at Second and Madison, no parking here to corner. Driving up and down that street, pretty regular basis, that seems to have cleared things up. I mean, it moved the congestion a little further down, but you can get on and off that corner now. And the committee did their due diligence and research. We sent Scott out to the corner of Harrison, sent Mike out, sent Darrell out, had the police run an accident report on that corner, and after considering all the information presented to us and speaking with the homeowner, looking at the permits on file, we decided to take no action regarding the fence at the corner of Second and Harrison. Is that enough?
Sure.
Okay.
And Joan, you're coming back tonight because you weren't satisfied with that response?
I'm not satisfied with that.
And so the feeling was that the appeal body would be coming back to the whole council. That was our feeling. So why don't you present what you have tonight?
Well, as she said, those things took place, and the homeowner was brought in unbeknownst to me, they were brand-new owners. I didn't know or, you know, it wasn't even in my thought process that they would be the ones responsible for it necessarily. If it was an easy fix and it was the people who actually had done that, not actually, according to the permit, which was supposedly a straight fence permit, then they should have to fix it. But these were new owners, they were brought in, and they were like blindsided and, you know, how dare we even do that to them, which is understandable. And so it kind of went that way and got put onto them to come up with an answer to, a solution to. They didn't want to do that. They said, no, we're not going to do that, and they sent a letter and said, no. Well, you were there. So then it got bandied about and that this, well, then we're just not going to do anything because if we make a new ordinance, that's going to open up a big can of worms, then everybody's going to have to go around to every corner and figure it out. Is it, you know, the right, you know, distance from each corner, et cetera? And I was just so taken aback by that, that nothing was going to happen. I couldn't even think of responding at that moment. But I woke up the next morning, I thought, well, now look here. There's ordinances in place already. You can't have anything on a corner that's higher than 18 inches, you know, to begin with. Secondly, that was a straight permit, not with that juncture out. So one way or the other, that should be fixed. Not that it should be on the new owners, they didn't have anything to do with it, but whoever allowed it in whatever office at City Hall or whoever allowed that should somehow be responsible or find the old owner who went against the permit or went beyond the permit, I should say. So that was my idea. And then I woke up the next morning, went, wait a minute, why can't we just shift the stop sign? Why can't we take the stop sign that's on Second, put it on Harrison? Everything is done. I mean, you can't even make it a four-way, it's either way, it doesn't matter, four-way or just two-way on Harrison, story's over. No problems. So that's my petition, and I will read it. The undersigned Fairfield citizens wish to see the corner of Second and Harrison Street corrected to allow safe, clear crossing while driving south on Second Street. We agree that the corner is visually compromised by a fence that extends outward toward Harrison Street, creating an unsafe circumstance that can and should be easily rectified. Arriving at the stop sign, one must stop then proceed very cautiously, nosing out toward the center before being able to see well enough to cross over. The solution may be determined by Public Safety Committee, but however, it's our suggestion. The easiest, most expedient, and least impacting answer might be to simply reposition the stop sign from Second to Harrison's side with advisory signage beneath it, if deemed necessary to alert the drivers of the change, or alternatively make it a four-way. I have signatures of 32 people. One of them is the postman. He was like overjoyed at the idea, and everybody leapt at it. Two people said, oh, I never really even noticed it. Okay. And one person said, well, I work for the city and I don't want to act as if I'm going against it. I said, okay. Everybody else was like, thank you for doing this. This is such a problem. The people who live right next door, there's four of them that live there, and they, they all said, oh, we don't want to go against these poor people, they just bought it. I said, well, that's not my intention, it never was. But the one guy said, I've had near misses two or three times there, and, you know, he's right there. So it's not like anybody's making up something that this is a problem. Everybody in the room knew that there's an issue with it, but let's just live with it. And I don't think it's necessary to live with it, we should just reposition the stop sign.
Again, accident history for this area?
None was reported to Fairfield Police Department at this intersection.
Now, somebody told me, one of the people that lived down there that signed this, I'd have to look at which address, he said there was a huge accident there last year, and it was a T-bone. I don't know, I wouldn't, you know, I wasn't aware of it.
We're not talking some huge controversy here. I can imagine if it was a huge T-bone that somebody would have reported.
Somebody would have known, I would bet, too.
Our records go back to '09, there was one at the intersection, one block east and one block west, but none at that intersection.
Okay. Irrespective of that, everybody knows that's a bad idea. If we just let it go, it's an easy fix, and there is a big accident. I'm done.
Well, I can't figure out why the city would be responsible for paying for something like that.
Well, at this point, it's just-
The permit, you say it's a straight-line fence permit, I guess I'd have to see that. I haven't seen the permit itself. Usually there's a drawing that goes along with it that shows what's going on. I know that setbacks, visual setbacks that are used for a side road out in the country, you have to have at least 500-foot clear sight each direction, and that's at a 55-mile-an-hour speed limit. In a situation like this where you're 25 mile an hour, 30 mile an hour, your distances, sight distances are considerably reduced in that sight triangle. They don't have to be 500 feet both directions. So it is the norm, it is something that people do that really isn't legal, which is pulling up beyond the stop bar and then looking and rolling a little farther. You're supposed to stop at the stop bar and then proceed forward and look both ways, right? A lot of people don't do that. And so now you're getting into a situation where you're trying to legislate something that tries to avoid near-miss accidents. Well, you have no way of quantifying what that is. You know, I can drive that street 500 times and never once have an incident at that corner. I can drive that street one day and I can go down there and not really being, paying attention like I'm supposed to, and I could have a near miss, okay? A lot of times, people are too rushed when they come to things. They'll, I watch people in this community pull up to a stop sign, somebody come up behind them, that first person's come to a full stop and left, the next person in line just follows them right on through, doesn't come to a stop as they're supposed to. I see that a lot. So how do you legislate against that? You have to have an officer right there, right at that second, to get that taken care of. Now, you know, do we set somebody out there and monitor traffic to find out how many actual near misses there are in a particular day, a week, a month? What are you looking for in order to rectify this situation other than tearing down those people's fence and requiring them to build something new?
I believe I just said, change the stop signs. It's not having anything to do with tearing down their fence.
Your Harrison Street is your major through street.
Okay.
So you don't want to stop your traffic on that street. The lower-volume street is Second, okay? So that's why that's set up like that initially.
Is there, Darren, can we, can we look at the traffic study on that and just see? I would imagine, especially with paving on Second Street, that maybe since last time it was looked at, you know, that there's increase on Second?
I don't-
Because it's a nice, smooth street now.
Well, our engineer's here, and she would have an idea of whether there was a traffic study done anywhere in the recent past for that area. And I don't believe that there would be.
Yeah.
You know, you would have to call for something like-
And additionally, we look to make sure that the fence was built within ordinance. Scott, would you like to speak to the measurements that were taken?
What?
I mean-
I'm not sure that, it's not really the-
Our job is to enforce the ordinance.
The point is not really whether the fence is in compliance or not. I think the point, the point is that-
Yeah, it is.
Huh? You think it is?
Yeah.
Wait, wait, you asked me some questions that I really want to respond to.
Sure, go right ahead.
Pardon?
Go right ahead.
Oh, oh.
No.
The reality is that that is a speed limit zone where people shouldn't be speeding. They are speeding. When they turn off of Main Street and onto Harrison, people love to speed down that way because they don't have anything, but they do have to stop a third or slow down because of the hump.
Right, right.
They want to speed, and they do. Now, not everybody, and no, you can't legislate everybody, and you can't be sitting there looking at it and all this, but I will tell you, Second Street is as busy as that one for a lot of the time, and you're negotiating all the parked cars as well while you're at it. But why would there be a problem with making them slow down and stop there? It's such, I mean, the mailman himself said that. He goes, thank God for the Third Street hump, because they just screamed down here. He said, I won't park anywhere close to that intersection, I stay way back. He said, I'd love to see that ended. People speed all the time through there. Nobody's sitting there looking for them and waiting for them. No, you can't legislate for it, people are going to speed all over the place. That's the job of people to do, it seems. But in the meantime, it is an issue, and it's so easy to fix. You don't need a new sign, pick up the one that's there, put it over there. How hard can that be? You don't have to interrupt the people over there and say, oh, you got to fix the fence. You don't have to do any of that. You have to inconvenience somebody to make a stop instead of speeding down there. And people who are not speeding, they're not going to care one way or another if there's a stop sign. That's the truth of it.
I see a concern in moving that stop sign, just from my position, because you're one block off the highway, and the amount of traffic that turns in off there could easily get backed up onto the highway, which would then be another safety concern.
It's not that much. It's not that much stop.
On the way to and from school, that's a very busy road.
Okay.
Well, I would say, there's a reason the stop sign is where it's at now.
Right.
We may not know what those reasons are enumerated in front of us, but there are probably some very good reasons for it. Unless we have a compelling reason that supersedes those reasons to move it from one location to another for this reason, and I went down that intersection the other day, I didn't think it was that big of a problem, we shouldn't move that stop sign. Unless you have a compelling reason to do so, I would say-
Well, the only, the only feasible change wouldn't be relocating the stop sign from Second to Harrison, it would have to go to a full four-way intersection. And then you have the learning curve in there of the people that have come through there at higher rates of speed and don't realize that now there is a stop sign there, even though it's flagged and it's been published and photographed and put in the paper and all of that, and they're going to go through it, and the person that's sitting there wanting to go south, thinking that it's a four-way intersection now, will pull out and you have an accident that way, okay? But the history of the intersection is one that there hasn't been any major accidents there since 2009.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, if, if it was different where there was an accident history that was there, and accident histories are quantifiable because there are damage levels, that if you have a major accident, the police will be there, the ambulance will be there, and that will be recorded. It will, it will be put down that that's where that's at.
Okay, so I have a petition with 32 names on it, signed. Every one of them was overjoyed. There you have it. So there's 32 people that are concerned about this particular thing, and they're the ones that mostly live down that area, have to traverse that every single day, and I think it's absolutely necessary to deal with this. Not to pretend that, okay, in the future, it may happen, it may not, it's such an easy fix to just be, you know, err on the side of caution. Why not? How hard is that?
I have a suggestion. Well, first of all, one of the reasons I interrupted Scott coming up, because he did report to the-
The committee.
The committee, that the fence was in compliance with our ordinance. And so that was kind of our issue, that, you know, on one hand, we can't, there's nothing we can do to, since the fence is in compliance with our ordinance, other than change our ordinance. As far as your request to change the stop sign, my personal feeling is, provided it's not too expensive to do a traffic study there, I would, I would be willing on behalf, you know, to, you know, since there was a petition for this, I'd be willing to entertain, to consider doing a simple traffic study and just determine, you know, what is the level of, you know, usage of each of those streets and see if a four-way is appropriate there. And then maybe put it back to public safety to bring a recommendation to council on that part. And if it is, I think that'd be fine. I understand if I was going down there every, every day, I probably would be annoyed at it. Truthfully, I went there last night while it was still light out, in daylight saving time, and I didn't really see it was a big deal. I mean, but I did have to, I did have to stop where I was supposed to, and then I had to stop again right as soon as my car was like right at the-
Right at the line.
Right at the line of the intersection. But I was still, even if a car was rumbling through, I wouldn't be in his way, but, you know, you could, you can stop again, and that's what I would do-
Yes, you can.
If I was going down there every day. So on one hand, it's, you know, it's not that big a deal to me personally, but obviously there's some people from the community who would like some action on it. So my suggestion is, well, first of all, before I, my suggestion is to ask, how much would a traffic study like that cost? Any idea?
Well, I'll start and look. The DOT did do traffic counts within the city last year.
Okay.
And so I'm sure that we have Harrison. I will check and see what we have on Second. But I'm sure we could work out something with the city crews to do some of the counting so we can, we can get sheer numbers and not necessarily study the numbers, just get sheer volumes of those there.
Darrell, do you have the counters?
Counts last year?
You don't have any?
DOT did.
What was the purpose of that count?
They just update the, it's for the road classifications.
Okay, they'll provide it to the city council?
They do. They were ready to the city, I don't think it comes to city council, so, but I can get that. It goes on their maps for each street, so I can-
So we have a history of these counts?
Mm-hmm.
It takes an engineer to decipher the maps, I've seen them myself.
Wow. Do they do it every year?
No, every five, I believe.
Mm-hmm. So we just probably see the last two reports from the DOT already, and we would have that information.
So are you open to sending it back to committee and looking at this, considering it?
Why set up a new study if we have that information already?
Sure.
City records?
We can look at-
Get those data, and then we can see if there's anything unusual there.
Melanie, you could maybe look at that for us, and then maybe-
I'll email it to Katie, and if there's not enough information there, then we can talk about price of what it would be to do the counts.
That would be a good solution to me, or a good next step for this, and at least we keep it moving and respond to the community. Would that be agreeable?
Yeah, data gathered. Long as we've got a way to pay for it.
I say, how much is this going to cost us?
The traffic study, you mean?
For employee time and-
Traffic count.
Traffic count?
We don't have the same, the same snakes that where every vehicle goes on, we don't have those.
We already have a crew, we're not going to pay crews special to do this, but-
No, but Darrell said he doesn't have counters.
He has personnel who can-
Bring a proposal back to council on a cost, estimated cost.
I say, the first thing we need to do is look into the cost estimate before we agree to actually do a count.
Okay.
Excuse me, why don't we look at the DOT data first before we make any further action and see if we want to go further?
Yeah.
We have the data already, let's just look at that first.
All right. So you want to bring it back to the whole council, or should we just bring it back to the committee? What's the, what's the wish of the council?
Well, the appeal was to the whole council, so the whole council should look at that data.
That'll be fine. So we'll, we'll do that, and maybe, maybe we could report on that at our next meeting.
Melanie, can we have the numbers by then?
Yes.
Okay, and we can decide how to pursue it from there then. Thanks, Joan.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along here. Next, we have on our agenda, an action item to set a public hearing for the downtown facade improvement project, and Melanie, do you have a little report on that for us?
Just a small update on it. At your, at the public hearing, the architect, Curtis Architecture, will be here, and they'll go over what's happening to each of the buildings in a little bit more detail of the project. But we're just setting the date of the public hearing for your next council meeting. The cost, the architect's opinion of cost is $481,400. And again, a majority of this is paid for with CDBG funds and owner contribution. The bids are coming, are due April 5th at 2:00 PM in the council chambers, and then that should be tabulated for your April meeting to consider. One thing I want to point out is, there's, there was a lot of discussion in this about how to get local contractors involved in this project. So it's bid, it's one contract getting bid, and so then that one contractor will have, or could have subcontractors to do the masonry, the windows, et cetera. So there is, plans, plans are available from Curtis Architecture of Otomo, but if a local contractor wants to simply look at the plans to see if they're interested, they can stop by French Renneker or City Hall to view the plans, and then maybe they can decide if they want to be a part of the project or not. So we, we've made two copies, two sets of the plans and specs available in town for those local contractors to look at to decide if they want to be part of the project.
And how is word getting out to contractors that those are there?
There, the public notice that is attached to your agenda would, will get published in the Fairfield paper Wednesday, I believe.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Thank you. So then we look for a motion to set a public hearing for the downtown facade improvement project for March 28th.
So moved.
At 7:00 PM. Moved by Hamilton, second by Flornoy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next, we have an action item to set another public hearing, this one for the amended plat of the MUM North Campus Village Phase 5 development. Scott, do you have something about that?
Yep. Planning and zoning met last Monday. Martin Brett came before us with a, some amendments to blocks 5 and 6 of Phase 5 of North Campus Village. It all fits within the guidelines of our planned unit development, and the commission passed it unanimously.
Thank you, Scott. So we look for a motion to set the public hearing for that also on the next council meeting, March 28th.
So moved. Second.
By Hamilton, second by Anderson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Aye? Okay. And one more public hearing, this one is for nuisance abatement schedule of assessments. And Scott?
Yep, these are our mowings, work that the street department does each year that we bill to homeowners. These will be the bills that we will be assessing that are unpaid to their property taxes. We currently have 10 in the amount of $3,082.50.
Okay, so we'll set the public hearing for that on March 28th again.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Anderson, second by Flornoy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next item is the consideration on the cigarette violation citations. Joy, do you have something on that?
Yes. The, the police department did a, I don't know what you call it.
Compliance, compliance check.
Compliance check on, for cigarette violations, and Dollar General and Walmart both failed. It was their first offense. So the state can go ahead and pursue these violations, and if they do, they keep the money, or the city of Fairfield can do it, and I need permission from the city of Fairfield or from the city council to pursue these violations. It's a $300 fine for each one, and then we get to keep the money.
Joy, this was the sale cigarettes to minors, is that what it was?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Has it been our policy in the past?
Yes.
To pursue that?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, if the state does it, they keep the money, and it's-
I mean, but as a first offense, we've gone-
Oh, we've gone all the way to five offenses.
Okay.
We move that we pursue the cigarette violation citations.
Moved by Flornoy?
Second.
Second by Hamilton. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Joy, where's that money go, to the general fund?
Yes, it does.
Okay, next, we have ESA. What's an ESA?
Engineering Services Agreement. Engineering Services Agreement.
Engineering what?
Engineering Services Agreement.
Services Agreement. For Liberty Drive Water Main. And Mike, do you want to tell us about that?
Sure, I'll take it. The city will be looking to contract for the installation of approximately 600 feet of Water Main on Fillmore Avenue from Sixth Street to Seventh Street. And so in your packet is an engineering service agreement for the design work associated with that contract, and also for the engineering during construction portion of that contract. The total amount of the design work is a lump sum for $10,400, and the budgeted amount for construction during engineering is $6,800, and that will be billed to us on an hourly basis as needed and as, as their engineers on site during the construction project.
Now, does that, that includes both the 600 foot on Fillmore and the 1,000 foot on Liberty Drive, or is the 1,000 foot on Liberty Drive another contract, engineering services agreement?
I believe this is the 600 feet on, no, it is, it is on both Liberty Drive and Fillmore Street.
So it's for the full 1,600 feet?
That's correct. Yep, that's correct.
Yeah. That sounds better as far as price-wise.
Yep, yep. Sorry, I left that part out.
No, no, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a.
I would move that we approve the engineering services agreement for the Liberty Drive and Fillmore Drive Water Main improvements. Second.
Moved by Hamilton, second by Thompson to approve the ESA for Liberty and, what is it?
Fillmore.
And Fillmore. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any other reports here? We have committee reports, but any other thing from administration department?
I can give the rec report now, or in the.
After committee, okay, that's fine. So personnel committee met, Mike?
Yep. We met twice since our last meeting. We met first on March, March 1st, and this was to discuss potentially the possibility, looking into investigation of possibility of the fire department transitioning from three full-time drivers to fewer than three full-time drivers. The reason this came up now is because of natural attrition. We had a gentleman resign from his position in November, and since that time, someone had been filling in but not brought on as a full-time driver. And another of the three drivers has indicated he's plans to retire sometime this calendar year. So mostly in attendance, I believe, were fire department personnel and families, and we, we went on for quite some time. It was a two-hour meeting. Everyone who wanted to speak got to speak. There were some misunderstandings that were cleared up in regards to, this wasn't trying to shut down the fire department, or there were some misunderstandings about how city financing works, that we'd overspent in other departments, and now we're trying to make up for it by reducing public safety. But that, it was a natural time to look at this when we had people stepping down from those positions, that this is the same as was, was done in the water department, where an employee had retired and the position wasn't refilled. It was realized that that position could be covered by partnering with the wastewater department. And I hope at this point now that we've had this kind of airing of grievances, so to speak, that this conversation can move forward now more data-driven, fact-driven, and number-driven so that we can really make a good decision as to what is the best model of fire department for our town. What's the best model for maximizing public safety but doing it as financially responsibly as possible? Darren, Tom, would you like to add it to that since you were also present at the meeting? Is that a pretty good summary?
Pretty good summary. It pretty well covers.
Thank you. All right. Then we met again tonight. Tonight's meeting, entirely different subject. Now that we are, the city is going to be in the process of hiring a new parking rec superintendent, it became clear that when Mike Harmon was putting together the job description, that there's still a question of, well, who does this position answer to? Does this position answer to the city administrator and the council, or the parking rec board? And there was actually an interesting article in the paper last week in which the parking rec board chairman of 26 years stated that the board does not have fiscal oversight of the department. We checked the ordinance, and in fact, the ordinance does grant the board fiscal oversight as well as personnel oversight. In practice, our administrator has been handling, handling both fiscal and personnel oversight in that department. So after some discussion, we decided that we'd like to make a recommendation to the full council to amend the ordinance, to bring the ordinance language in, in alignment with the actual practice, which is administrator, overseas, personnel, performance reviews, hiring and firing, et cetera, and also overall fiscal management. And we also recommend the, the board be transitioned to an advisory board so they'd still have a purpose of looking into potential projects and programs for parking rec, but that the authority would then be here on the council and administrator to actually make the decisions in terms of changing fee structures and these kind of things. One reason is because the council, as elected officials, are answerable to the people who, who elected us in this position, and in the past, there have been times when those of us on the council and the mayor have been somewhat out of the loop in terms of what's going on in that department and in terms of changing policy. So this is the motion that was made, and second, it's our committee is making this motion to officially amend the ordinance and grant the powers that are already in practice granted to our city administrator, make that formal, and then change the name from parking rec board to parking rec advisory board.
Michael, are you aware of any other city personnel that might be under the authority of another board other than the city council?
The only other city department that has a board is library, but that is dictated and mandated by state law, so.
Well, right, but do they have any authority over the employees of the library?
Not that I'm aware of, any other department.
Mike said yes.
Yes, the library board.
Besides the library.
Exercises personnel control.
Besides the library.
But that's under state law.
Yes.
So this is the only exception that we're, we know of in the city.
And there's precedent. There was a water board years ago, and, and that was actually just outright dissolved at some point because it was recognized that it was, I suppose, outdated. Interestingly, the ordinance that grants the rights that the board now has was put in place in 1972, which would have been prior to the Roosevelt School being converted into a, an exercise facility, prior to the racquetball court building, prior to the indoor pool, and obviously prior to a new gym. So it's, it is not the same department that it was in 1972. That board at that time was most likely overseeing parks. So it's, it's a, it's a whole new ballgame.
Mike, I want, I want to just comment, first of all, these are like two really big issues, and it sounds like you, you guys have done some good work. Regarding the fire department, have we looked into or considered getting some outside consulting on this? You know, this is an emotional issue. There's, you know, and everyone feels emotional about, you know, fire, you know, being protected from fire, but, you know, for us to make a decision in a most rational and intelligent way, it might be useful, you know, in addition to, you know, three intelligent people on the, on the personnel committee, to have access to people who, you know, understand what many cities do and what, what our options are, and be a little more dispassionate about it. Any suggestions in there?
Yeah, Mike can speak on, at our work session, we gave Mike, city administrator, the, the priority that we would like a personnel review, more than recodification, more than a new long-term planning document.
Right.
And so Mike has looked into it, and.
Not, not quite yet.
Yeah, he needs, well, essentially, you need to find.
There's a few things.
Need to find a revenue source, but that was, the idea was to do a review of all 66 city positions.
To make sure that every, every.
To find efficiencies.
That it's most efficient in every area. But, but, but this is a very more specialized area. I, I really suggest that we look into getting some professional advice on this because it would be, it would be an expense, but it may be very well worth it if we're making some major changes. It could help us sort it out if we, if we need to, or if we don't need to, at least we've done our due diligence in that regard. That's my personal suggestion. Because even, as much as I respect you all on, on the committee, I think having someone from the outside with a lot of experience doing, or seeing these kind of transitions or understanding the needs of different departments in different cities would be very useful in this case.
Well, my hope is that after this meeting, where essentially the group came, was saying, leave it as it is, and at the end of the meeting, the committee said, well, we still want to look into this. We hear you. We've heard what you said, but we still, we feel responsible as citizens who are asking for property tax relief to look into this. I'm hoping that now we can work with the fire department and that they'll spend some time investigating possibilities rather than creating arguments to maintain the status quo, which is, feels like up until now, what most of the energy has been spent doing. So I'm pretty sure Scott Vaughn, Fire Chief Vaughn, is, is open to looking at what would a two-full-time model look like, filling in with part-time. But yeah, it would be good to have real data, real examples of other communities and what they've done. We need more, we need more facts before a decision can be made. So any way we can get those facts would be helpful.
I'd like to add something, though, to that. Under the current budget situation that we're in, and considering the fact that our personnel constitute 80% of our costs, I think right now, we should, every position that comes taken by natural attrition should be looked at very carefully in terms of what it needs to be filled, and if we can't consolidate and make it more efficient. So if we just maintain that policy with every position, then I think it's fair to everybody concerned.
I agree. So more on that, but we did have a motion. I made a motion to formally amend our ordinance regarding the parking rec board. I don't know if I was.
I would second that.
Do you want the language again, Joy?
Well, I, does that have to be an ordinance?
Well.
Well, I'm making a motion to amend it. I'm not saying we are amending it now, but we are.
Oh, just to amend it?
To amend.
Okay, gotcha.
To write an ordinance and bring it back to us.
Yeah, to amend the ordinance, officially granting fiscal and personnel oversight authority to our city administrator, and changing the parking rec board to an advisory board. That's the.
And then Matt will have to come back in ordinance form and have three full readings before the council for the wording change that's going to be necessary.
In a public hearing prior to each reading, anybody who wants to speak on behalf can speak. The reason, again, we're doing this now is moving forward. We're looking at the, the best way to aid the new superintendent, whoever gets hired, in doing his or her job to the best of their ability, and just keeping the channels of, of exactly who they answer to, who they work with as clear as possible. It has nothing to do with anything from the past. It's, it's just looking forward to whoever gets that position in the future.
Okay, we have motion by Hallie and second by Hamilton to bring before the council an ordinance to reevaluate the oversight of the parking rec director.